For everyone to come in.
Yep. Okay, I haven't seen anyone else pop in for a little bit now, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. We are moving, first of all, thank you all for joining us, especially with the weather as it is. I know that it's been a challenge for some folks to get on. For instance, I have not gone mad with power. I just came into the district office because I have no power at my house. So I know that it can be a struggle to get online when we've got the wind up. So thank you all for making it. We've moved our presentations back behind new business tonight to make sure that we can get through our consent agenda and new business, just in case more people lose power. And as a reminder to everyone coming in, if you have public comment you'd like to make or questions you'd like to ask, please use the Q and A function that is most likely down at the bottom of your screen. Okay, we've got the agenda up. So let's take a look at the minutes and do I have a motion to approve the agenda and minutes as presented in the agenda?
Move to approve?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, the agenda and minutes have been approved. We will now move on to the consent agenda. I will now, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or comment that anyone would like to make?
Do we want to address the comments that we kind of went through today, or are we good?
I think that some of those are going to come out in the presentation. I do want to note that this is, with a personal report, something like this is always a very hard decision for those involved, absolutely. Trying to balance the community of the school district with our financial responsibilities to the school district. And it's always hard every time. So I appreciate the hard work of the administration on doing everything they can to be as conscious of that community as possible.
Very well said, Brooke, thank you.
So with that said, all those in favor of passing the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? The consent agenda passes and is approved. We have no items removed from the consent agenda. We have no unfinished business. So now we move on to new business actions, and these are the MOUs, the Memorandums of Understanding. And I don't have the acronym for LOA.
Letter of Agreement.
Letter of Agreement, thank you, I knew that you would. That we have had with SWEA, PSC, and SEIU, the various unions representing the staff of the district. So let's get into each one, one at a time. Memorandum 2021-2, Approval of the MOU with SWEA, it's there on the screen. This is, do we have a motion to approve this?
Move to approve?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of memorandum 2021-
Discussion first.
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you. Is there any discussion or comments? We did want to note that this goes through until the end of August of next year, although there are parts of it that are understood to complete when the COVID crisis completes. I think that's all the comments I had on that one. Anyone else have anything? Okay, I think this is a really great MOU that has been put together by the administration and the union leadership. I want to thank both of them for their hard work on coming to good compromises for the safety of our staff and responsibility to the school district. Now that we've got, unless there's any more discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, the memorandum 2021-2, the approval of the MOU with SWA has been approved. Now we will move on to memorandum 2021-3, Approval of the LOA with PSC. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Again, I'd like to thank the leadership of PSC as well as the administration on coming to, again, another great compromise. I'm going to mention this each time because the leadership of each separate union, and I want to recognize them individually. But I think, again, it's a great compromise to be had. Any other comment?
I would just say that I appreciate the efforts of our administration. This is a very difficult time for everybody. And I know that it's even hard on me sitting here going through this. So I think that we're trying the best that we can during this pandemic. I'm very hopeful that things do not continue for much longer.
Agreed wholeheartedly. Okay, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, memorandum 2021-3, Approval of the LOA with PSC has been approved. Memorandum 2021-4, Approval of the LOA with SEIU. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Move to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I do not hear any discussion, so I will repeat my thanks to the union leadership and the administration for coming to a good compromise on this, especially one that will help our transportation budget next year and our bus drivers in particular by keeping them on furlough. So thank you for that. Do we have, all those in favor, please say?
I would say one more thing there too.
Go ahead.
I would say that I do appreciate, because I only gave him that first one. I gave all the kudos to our administration, but you're absolutely right. The unions negotiated in good faith. This is the agreements that they did come to. And so although, again, none of us like the situation we're in in this COVID-19 pandemic era, again, I'm just going to say, I hope that this comes to an end and we get back in the classroom ASAP because this now is really beginning to affect us in a, I think, in ways that we can't even begin to imagine. But anyway, I do appreciate the efforts of the union and again, in the administration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Damian. Now, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Memorandum 2021-5, Approval of Policy 3122, Update Excused and Unexcused Absences. Do I have a motion to approve this?
To approve?
Do I have a second?
Second?
Julie and Ann are on a roll.
Yeah. Julie?
I mean Andrea and Ann are on a roll. Sorry.
Take that as a compliment. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Andrea, would you like to, is there anything in particular that you'd like to call out on this since it's a call session?
I think, you know, we haven't changed anything since the workshop when we reviewed, so.
Okay.
Hey Andrea, so just a quick question. And in here, it talks about participation, or I guess non-participation for a student that is online and, you know, attending class, that could be, I guess, that they could have a an attendance marked against them. Can you go through that really quick? I mean, is that, how far does that go? If, you know, if they're not answering questions, or what does that look like?
So that is defined in the Distance Learning Plan that we passed previously. And that is a directive from the state that we have to have some sort of monitoring for attendance. So the detailed particulars would fall under that Distance Learning Plan. To my understanding, it's just that you are looking for some form of participation, whether it be that they're logging in or completing exit tickets in some capacity.
That's correct.
But we have to have some form of attendance tracking in order to maintain enrollment documentation. Right, Joe?
For enrollment purposes, attend, but they don't have to attend live. So we are recording Zoom meetings. They can, you know, participate, but they don't have to participate at the moment. It is provided. But they do have to participate in some way, shape, or form, and the teachers are tracking that and are aware of attendance and how to track attendance.
Okay.
Thank you, Charles. Any other comment? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And the opposed? That passes, the excused and unexcused absences passes. Next up, memorandum 2021-6, Approval of Policy 3414, Update Infectious Disease. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments to be made here?
At the workshop, we had talked about with this one adding parent, guardian, or caregiver to the language, and I don't see that reflected. So I would like to motion that we change that and then move to approve the policy with the change.
So I did it on the other one. I didn't have notes, I wanted it for this one as well. But we can.
Yes, I think.
So we have a motion to update this with, or caregiver. Do I have a second for that?
You did, I seconded.
Okay, thank you, Damian. It has been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on updating it?
So let me just stop for a second, if you don't mind. This is about providing a medical history. And so I think Andrea, I'm not sure that we want to indicate caregiver. It probably needs to be a parent or guardian as it's stated there, if I'm reading it correctly, because it is about the medical history form.
I withdraw my second in hopes that she'll amend her motion.
So hold on. So Joe, if we had a student who was unaccompanied and they needed to fill this out, distract my thinking with me. The district then acts as a guardian in obtaining medical records then?
If the student is on their own, then they are their own guardian.
Regardless of their age?
Correct. If they're unaccompanied minor, then it would be, in all likelihood, the guardian would be foster situation, where it's the county, they would have a guardian. So whenever we, I mean, as far as I know, when we deal with students who are unaccompanied minors and decisions have to be made, they have an appointed guardian. I'm just saying that a caregiver is-
A student was living with like grandparents who may not have guardianship.
Yeah, they'd still be the guardian. By our records, they'd still be the guardian.
Okay, okay, then I am rescinding all of that and going back to the original, which Damian also supports.
Okay, the second and the motion have both been withdrawn. So we are back to our original discussion of the original motion to approve the policy as written, as updated. Do we have any more discussion? I do not believe we have any more discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Next up, memorandum 2021-7, Approval of Policy 3418, Update Response to Illness and Injury.
And this is the one that I made the changes to, highlighted in yellow.
Yep, wonderful. Do we have a motion to approve this update to the policy?
Move to approve?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comment? Okay, I believe that suggests no comment. So all those in favor of passing the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Last one in the new business. Memorandum 2021-8, Approval of Policy 6512, Update Infection Control Program. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Move to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? I believe that suggests no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. I believe that is the end of our new business, which will take us through to our presentations.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Kristi at this point to bring in all of the administrators as panelists so that they can present and participate.
Welcome. And whenever you are ready, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to start a little bit out of order. I'm going to actually have Paul start for us with an athletics update. Then we'll move to John, then James, then Jeff, and then we'll have Suzie go last. And I wanted to just start with a big shout out and a thank you to all of our staff because school started successfully and it was a big lift this year. So we did it, and I believe we did it pretty well. Tonight, as I said, you're going to hear from each of the administrators about the state of our program. We're also going to have Dan do an update on enrollment during this portion of the presentation because it fits here. And we'll have a few slides because we only have a few students on campus. So we're not doing a lot of slides and presentation. This is really just the beginning of the year update. At the end, I'll also remind the board of our reopening plan and our timelines. And I would ask that, as folks have questions, I'm going to hold them until the end, let the presentation flow, and then take questions at the end if people have them, if that's okay. So Paul, why don't you start with the state of athletics?
Sure. And really, despite the state of the current state of events, there really is some pretty exciting things going on with our high school athletics. Just kind of a reminder, most of the year last year, we did a lot of work for transitioning into a new athletic conference. This was caused, in addition to shifting teams in our league throughout the state and all the classifications, there's a general realigning to create the best environment for competitive equity.
Well, I'm just going to stop you. Somebody needs to mute. We're getting some feedback. So I'm not sure where that's coming from. Is it you, Paul? Because you're the only one not muted.
Nope.
Nobody hears it but me, so keep going, Paul, I'm sorry.
No, I heard something. I mean, I can hear it.
Okay.
So basically, it's across the state. It's something, you know, the numbers, we talked about this last year. The participation numbers across the state have been down. And leagues and classifications throughout the state have been working to get a really a great experience for the athletes and try to get them into competitive leagues. And some of it was out of our control, but once we started moving in that direction, I think it ended up really well for Southwoodby. We're in a new league, the Emerald Sound League. And basically, it's made up of 11 to 14 schools. And we were able to keep our relationships with Granite Falls, Sultan, Kings, and Cedar Park Christian. And we were grouped with between eight and 10 1A Seattle and Bellevue schools. So it's an all 1A league. It's, I believe it's the largest 1A league in the state. And it will allow us to have two separate divisions. And those divisions will be aligned based on their competitive abilities. And it's going to offer more postseason opportunities for the Falcons, including in some sports, more allocations to state. So we're excited about this. It's going to be, I think it's going to be a neat opportunity. Unfortunately, currently due to the coronavirus, we're working under the guidance of the Department of Health, the Governor's Office, OSPI, and the WIAA. And right now, all high school sports are on hold statewide. And this is all, you know, decisions are all safety first for our athletes and our staffs. At this time, we do have a competition plan in place with all the sports being offered in seasons, and they'll be in a condensed season. And generally, all the sports will be at a 70% of a normal season's competitions. Real quickly, the first season that Southwoodby would participate in would, practice would start on December 28th, and that would be boys and girls basketball and wrestling. The second season would start March 1, and that would be our normal fall sports, including volleyball, football, cross country, boys tennis, and girls soccer. Note, football will start February 17th. They need more practices to get ready due to the nature of the sport. And our third and final season would start April 26th, and this would be our spring sports. Fast pitch, boys and girls track, girls tennis, boys soccer, baseball, and boys and girls golf. I will say that the WIAA is especially sensitive to getting the spring sports done this year. As you know, we lost the entire spring season last year. So as with all things COVID, these plans and schedules are tentative and flexible, and they're constantly being worked on. I think that as things are moved around and adjusted, like I said, I think there's a special effort going to be put on to getting the spring sports in. But there's many determining factors, again, determined by the WIAA, Department of, State Department of Health, Island County Department of Health, the OSPI, and our own Southwoodby School District. And, you know, we're Island County and our, most of our, all of our competitions, other schools are either in King or Snohomish. So obviously, not only does it matter what phase we're in, will affect our competitions, but what phase King County and Snohomish is in, what they're allowed to do. So the WIAA and our league and our conversations have made it clear that it's possible that we are committed to doing what we can do. In other words, Southwoodby is going to participate and compete when and where we can compete. If King County is shut down, they can't. Snohomish is shut down and they can't. You know, we'll go out and we can, we'll go out and try to find other schools that can compete outside a league. What we want to do is, we want to give our athletes the opportunity to have that great experience. Right now, the WIAA has offered a limited team practice period. This is highly unusual, but the situation being that it is. So basically, starting Monday, September 28th through November 30th, they have what they would call a summer rules practice. And basically, what this is in the WIAA is, it is, any team can practice. And there's no out of season. And right now, they say no competitions. I'll get into that a little bit in a minute. But basically, it's an opportunity for the kids to turn out. And again, I had a coaches meeting last night, and the emphasis for us is, you know, you're not getting ready for a season, but I want opportunities for our kids to go out and engage with their coaches. Those are really important relationships. And, you know, I think being a part of something bigger than themselves and also having goals, you know, and working toward a goal. And, you know, for that athlete's, in that athlete's mind, that season is going to happen. And you know what? I'm doing everything we can to make that happen. And I think that's just a real positive for the athletes. You know, obviously, we are going to be working, we're in phase three. I'm working with, closely with the Island County Department of Health. And that really is the closest body that determines the guidelines and the protocols that we have to operate under. And so I'm working with Joe and working with Coopville and Oak Harbor. You know, we've got, we've got all the protocols and procedures, you know, wearing of masks, sanitizing, hand sanitizer, attestations that are going to be taken daily. You know, we're, obviously, still, as much as we want to get our athletes out there, safety is first. And so we, our coaches trained on daily attestations, taking temperatures to give our athletes an opportunity. Again, I'm working with, and our coaches are working with specific guidelines. Interesting, just today at our league meeting, our WIAA representatives reported that the WIAA and the Governor's Office is currently reviewing the metrics that they determined for the guidelines, and that those, again, this is for athletics, the metrics that they, that the guidelines work with, and they're going to review those, and that could change. That wouldn't necessarily change any of the seasons, but it could change when and what we could do. So like I said, there's a lot of advocates out there for high school athletics that are influencing, advocating for athletes to happen. And the WIAA and the Governor's Office is listening to that. You know, there's a number of, there's a number of guidelines that really aren't consistent. A number of the parks, and this is across the state, a number of the rec teams, they operate under different guidelines than the school does. And there's a, there are some advocates that are pushing for more of a unified metrics for that. So it's tentative, but we're moving in a direction, we're working to give our athletes an opportunity to have an experience, the best experience that they can have. And I just, we have a great group of coaches. That's an important relationship, and I'm excited about our league.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Paul before we move on from the board?
I was curious about how this would work, how the overlapping seasons would work for multi-sport athletes. I was curious about how this would work, how the overlapping seasons would work for multi-sport athletes.
The seasons, the only overlapping that we would have would be football that would start a little bit earlier. Other than that, it's about eight weeks. Each sport is about eight weeks. So there shouldn't be much overlapping.
I kinda have the same question Brooke has. I'll articulate a little bit better, Paul. Which is, for a team that makes it to the state playoffs, and then that multi-sport player has to go into another sport, are they bound by the same rules of meeting the same number of practices in the new sport? Or will there be a waiver because they've been playing in a sport?
Okay. So first thing, I don't know that we're gonna have state playoffs this year. Right now, the talk is it would be a regional playoff. Again, it's still in discussion. And that would be the culminating. So yes, there has been a waiver on the number of pre-participation, this is the term now, practices that an athlete would have. It would be reduced to five.
Thank you, Paul. That answered my question.
Good question.
Thanks, Paul. All right, we're gonna move on to John and the academic world of school.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. First, I want to say, we're ready for this. And that is our theme that are... Is that me? I think Charlie, is Charlie speaking?
No, we're all muted.
I thought I heard Charlie's voice. Anyways, we're ready for this. Basically, what that is, is it's our theme that our ASB student officers picked for this year, and our staff has adopted this. And so far, so good. We are ready for this. We're having a great start considering the circumstances. Again, night and day from what took place last spring as we were trying to build an airplane in the air. You know, kind of simplistically, our approach is really, is, you know, we got from Dr. Desiree Alexander from the Bureau of Education and Research. And basically, it is, we want our students to create more than consume. And that's a real paradigm shift, I think, for all educators, our staff and our district. I want to say a big thank you to our school board, to Dr. Mocha. The soft start was huge. It was really, really valuable for our teachers, and I think for our students too, to slowly ease into the new schedule that we have. But again, I really appreciate that. And I want to say that, you know, we kind of took the game plan from Dr. Alexander from the BER. And basically, it is, you know, our approach is, we're optimal learning in the remote approach. There's five major components, five conditions. The first is, don't use every tech tool. Now, if you remember last spring at the high school, we had teachers using all kinds of different platforms, avenues, things like that for their instruction. And obviously, that didn't work out real well. So basically, this year, our hub, our platform, major platform, is Google Classroom. And Google Classroom is used by every teacher, and all of our students can access all of their assignments, all of their Zoom meeting codes, et cetera, et cetera. And also, it's a really good tool for our parents to be able to access that information about what their students are doing. So that's been working out really well. Also, had some consternation last spring with our Zoom meetings. We found that, you know, Zoom is not to be used as an instruction tool. Zoom is a connection tool. So we limit our Zoom meetings to a half hour during the day for each class. Now, that doesn't include breakout groups and discussions and things like that. But again, it is for connection, not instruction. Basically, the first point, you know, every tech tool. The second thing was, have clear expectations. And I think we've done a great job of defining what we're doing, how we're doing, what our approach is to our students and to our parents. And really, what we think is really important is to get into a normalcy, get into an established routine, and really get that rhythm of the remote learning. And I think, you know, we're in week two right now, and we're really starting to feel the groove. I think we're getting good feedback from our students, from our teachers, and from our parents. The third thing is academic rigor. It's really important. We have this huge responsibility for our kids when they leave Southwoodby High School that they're career and college ready. And that is a huge responsibility. We have to make sure that our curriculum is still robust and rigorous. And we want to make sure that we cover and that our students have all the standards set forth by OSPI in all of our classes, especially our core classes, and that they're ready for the real world. So again, academic rigor. The fourth thing is cultural relevancy. And that is, you know, here at the school, what is the culture of our school? What is the culture of our community? What is the culture of our nation? And obviously, there's a lot of things going on right now in the name of social justice, equity, things of that nature. And so a big priority for our school also is our equity training, our equity awareness, and also our education. So again, we are, this would be the first year, we're kind of in year two of Dr. Caprice Holland's training. We're in year two of our cultural competency training. And so we will have an equity team here at Southwoodby High School, and that will be comprised of students, which are gonna be a huge voice, parents, and also staff. So we're excited to get that underway. And that committee is really gonna be an action team. We're looking at embedding more diverse viewpoints in our curriculum that we already have here in our classes, awareness. And we're also looking at the possibility of having a class, proposing to you, the school board, a class about cultural awareness. You know, something that our students can take, whether it's a requirement or an elective, that's to be still worked out. But again, that's something that the group is gonna be working on. The fifth, and a really important aspect for our staff, is basically student connections. It's building healthy relationships. And so really, our social-emotional learning curriculum is gonna be really important, not just in our advisories, but also our classrooms. And we started that today, K-12, with Carol Froch. We worked through some things about the connectivity. The real big concern I have and our staff has is that if you go back to last spring, our teachers, K-12, and our students already had that face-to-face connection with their teachers. This year, we're starting remotely. So we don't have that face-to-face connection that we've had last spring. So it's really important that we make sure that we connect with our students, whether it's through activities, athletics, clubs, things of that nature. So we're really emphasizing that also. And Dr. Mocha also wanted to give us the opportunity for some big shout-outs. So I'm gonna feel like, it's gonna feel like the Academy Awards, because I have a lot of people to thank here. The first thing is, a big shout-out to Dr. Mocha. I talked to many colleagues from around the state. I hope you guys realize, she didn't have a summer. She was here every day, working. The communication has been phenomenal to the admin group, to the teachers, to the community, to the parents, et cetera. And again, leadership in crisis is very difficult. And I think we're very lucky to have her. And believe me, I've heard some horror stories going on across the state about their remote start, and it hasn't been so good. So I'm thankful for that. Also, I want to thank Paul Lagerstätt, our Assistant Principal, Sue Ann Brewer, our tech tosa, and Kayla Phillips, who does it all, who's our activities director, our leadership teacher, and also is doing her principal intern right now. They didn't have much of a summer either. And they were with me, with us here at the school, working hard for pretty much all of the summer, above and beyond. So I want to say a big thanks to them. Our secretary staff have been here every day, troubleshooting for parents and students, handing out equipment, Chromebooks, textbooks, et cetera, et cetera. And again, they're phenomenal. Also, our custodians. Our building is sparkling. I just wish we had all of our students here. But they'll be here soon, sooner than later, hopefully. I also want to thank, we also have our highly impacted students here right now, coming to school live and with our special education teachers, and also our parent professionals who are working with them one-on-one. And again, thank you very much for that. And again, last but certainly not least, our staff. Our staff is, they really have inspired me. And it's supposed to be the other way around. I'm supposed to inspire them. But they have inspired me. They really have modeled lifelong learning. They are lifelong learners. They have really, if you think about it, had to, a total paradigm shift, totally changed their approach to meet the needs and the necessities in a remote learning approach. And again, they have been phenomenal. They have been willing. They've been working hard, a lot of hours. And again, the silver lining in all of this is, once we're back fully live, because of the necessity, we've had to force ourselves to think outside of the box, our teachers are gonna have even more skills when we get back to the fully live approach. So again, a big shout-out to our teachers and our staff. And finally, I just want to say, again, thank you for tonight, letting me share some things. If you have any questions, let me know. But I just want you to know that I speak for our entire staff. We miss our kids. We miss seeing our kids here in the building. And it is kind of eerie when you're here every day and you don't hear kids. You don't go out in the hall and see them and check in, you know. We all have kids that we check in visually on, and we just don't have that. So again, you know, back to the social-emotional part, we're really concerned, and we have a plan, and we have a great student support team that we're already, you know, have a list of kids that we're working and reaching out to. I know I'm talking 100 miles an hour, but I just want to make sure I thank everybody. So basically, you know, I had a parent information night last week, and we posted that on our website. There's a lot more information about our approach. And I welcome any of the board members or anybody out in the community to go ahead and look at that. And if there's any questions, please let me know. So, any questions?
You have one in the Q and A. I don't know if you want to answer it or not, John.
I'll take, we'll take questions at the end.
Okay.
So why don't we move on to James? Thank you, John. Thanks for the shout-out. You know, there's a, well, never mind.
Hopefully, you get next summer sometime.
Go ahead, James.
Hi there. Good to see everyone. I'm gonna give you a little trip down memory lane and give you a snapshot into the middle school life. So last spring, just like everyone, we evaluated the chaos. You know, what went well, what did not. And then we spoke to community and listened to families and their struggles. And so this year, we tried to create a model that was going to meet as many needs as possible while providing a higher quality of learning. And so a lot of this is gonna sound similar to what John said, which is good. I mean, consistency across the board is always a nice thing to have. So if I'm duplicating, just bear with me and listen to my angelic voice. So we, after the evaluation, we decided to come up with a model that limited the amount of screen time as much as possible. So we have basically four sections, four classes, if you will, that are sandwiched in between significant times for student support and student independent learning time. So what that provides us basically is, a student can get up. It provides flexibility for families. They can work on materials. It is a flipped classroom model, so to speak, which is something that is kind of new to us. And then, starting at nine o'clock, students have basically hour chunks. And we have half an hour of Zoom time that is teacher-directed, and that's for a number of things, whether it's clarification on a lesson, whether it's giving insight to other materials. And then, so students in that class are a part of that half an hour. The second half hour of that block is geared towards small group intervention time. Not every student is in that. And we're limiting as much as we can the amount of extra half-hours, if you will, for kids. Because we don't want them on the screen time for six hours a day. No one likes that. It's not good for anyone. I've got glasses, and I've lost the rest of my hair because of it. It's ridiculous. But, so anyway, and then again, I'm gonna reiterate the times outside of, so before nine o'clock and after 1:50, I believe, we have times where students can reach out to teachers. It's also independent learning is what we're calling it, student support. And that's the time when teachers can get ahold of kids as well and put them in small groups if they need to. If they have a common deficit, common misconception, they can put those kids together and help solve the problem. Another reason why we chose to have so much independent learning time and student support time, it's not just because of the Zoom, but we also were aware of the fact, basically, that because of spring, and across the state, it's not just our district, but because of spring and the way that it was implemented, we knew that we were gonna have kids coming into this year with significant gaps in knowledge. And so this is a way for us to try and close those gaps. And then on Wednesdays, Wednesdays, we have health and our SEL class. So students would have one class on Wednesday. And half an hour of that is gonna be for health, and a half an hour of that is gonna be for our SEL program. They have that for one semester, and it offsets whatever, if they have a semester of Washington State History, say, first semester, their second semester then would be the health and SEL, and then vice versa. We're doing, we are modifying. So last year was our first year of implementation of a quote SEL class. And so just like with anything that we try, it evolves over time. This year, we're incorporating some book studies, which will be, I'm really excited for that. And yeah, it's, the program is evolving and becoming more robust. It just takes time. So... And then I want to talk about Apex. So to support teachers, and I'm gonna mirror what John said. I am absolutely, and this is genuine, I'm so blown away with what the teachers have been able to do. They, and this is my shout-out. It goes to blanket staff. I mean, my amazement and just genuine love is that everyone's attitudes have been phenomenal. And if you think about the chaotic time that we're in and the amount of disruption that has taken place in our quote norm, anytime that that happens, it affects people different ways. And there's a number of people who would take that into a negative kind of light, if you will. And our staff has just been awesome. They've met the challenge. They're learning in their practice. They're growing in their practice. They're trying new things to get material across to kids. And I haven't heard, I haven't heard anyone, you know, just be down about it. So I just appreciate that. And that, it may sound trivial and simplistic, but that is a foundation of a solid district. And it's very good for kids. Attitude trickles now. So anyway. The Apex piece, we're thinking about ways to try and give resource and support to teachers. Because again, their entire educational world was flipped upside down. And we were asking them to go out and create lessons that were in quote "the virtual world", when no one has ever had any real training in that. This year, of course, we trained the heck out of people, which was awesome. But we chose to take Apex as our foundational curriculum. It's an online curriculum, and it has material that is for students. And the resource and support is that teachers can use this in whatever way and capacity they see fit. They don't have to go out to the internet and try to find all the videos and the, you know, practice sheets and things of that nature. They have it there for them. But it also allows them to modify the lessons. So it gives them autonomy to stay inside their own practice, which has been really nice. It also provides students consistency. So they're not having to go from class to class and, you know, go to 13,000 different websites. Everything's pretty much housed right there. So again, consistency, especially at the middle school level, I'll just, you know, I'm biased, I know, but at the middle school level, our kids need that. Actually, I need that. What am I talking about? And then our teachers, I talked a little bit about the attitude. I had a quote from one teacher, and I thought it was fitting. So I asked if there was any sort of ah-hahs from the beginning of the school comparatively to spring. And one teacher put, let me, I don't want to misspeak. Here it is. Attendance is much higher than it was in the spring, and I'm seeing a lot more work production and effort from the majority of my students. And that's Italian sign, you know. Kids want to be back. They want to be back. And we miss seeing them, of course, in the hallways. We miss that energy. But we are gonna be doing the best that we possibly can. And then lastly, on this part, we're gonna be sending a survey out to parents soon. Because we want to get some feedback from families on how things are going. I've received some feedback, and most of it has been positive. We've had some families who are still having struggles. And I asked this in a public setting, when you And I asked, I asked this in a public setting, when, when you fill the survey out, it really helps if, if, unless you say, let me take a step back. Don't say this sucks because that doesn't give us any feedback, right, that we can work with. If, if you give us the struggle that you're having and communicate, we are more than willing to, to work out a solution and we want to do that. So please give us your honest feedback on what is working well and, and what struggles you, you still have or are still out there. And then just a quick update on our virtual learning program. So SWVL has seen, has seen an increase this year. And we've, we've offered opportunity for families, 18 of them in all currently, which has been really nice. So some students are doing a hybrid model. So the, the opportunity is offering them some classes that, that fit inside their current family situations. And so it's, it's allowing them to continue that flexibility piece. We have some students who were homeschool, homeschooling and they've actually partnered now with our district because we're able to give them materials that I think are more, are higher level than maybe some of the things they were having or seeing. And then, and then we have, we have, you know, families who are concerned about the state of, of, you know, the coronavirus and such. And so they feel more comfortable having their kids at home. And I've said, you know, we just, we just feel, we feel more at peace if we're going to have our kids at home for the year. So this has allowed them an opportunity to, again, navigate their, their family environment and make it into something that is with the, with the schooling, make it into something that, that really works for them and makes them feel comfortable. So pretty proud of that too. All in all, I think things are going well. Is it perfect? Of course not. Nothing is. And I, I really appreciate the people that I work with from the admin level down. Again, just, I know it seems, it seems cliche, but I really am blown away with how, how well people are working and the challenges they've taken on and the work that they have produced. So, and they still, you know, this is part of being a teacher. They care about kids and it's evident, right? They reach out to families constantly and we're, you know, any kid who's, who is not present and hasn't been, you know, connecting, we're, we've got a team that reaches out to those families. And we'll continue to do that. That's never going to go away until we finally get ahold of everyone. So anyway, that's my spiel. Thank you for listening. And yeah, I appreciate the time.
James?
Yeah?
Thank you. Could you just expound a little bit on, because I really like what you're doing around equity. So could you just talk about that just a bit?
Sure. Yeah. So for our, for our SEL class, we are combining equity into it. So the book study that we're going to be doing is, the book for eighth graders is called Stamped. It is, there's, there's two versions, basically. There's an adult version, which is called Stamp From the Beginning. And then the author partnered with an old middle school principal named Jason Reynolds, who is pretty famous now. And Jason, and he rewrote the book into a format that was more digestible and easier to read and geared towards middle school kids, basically. So it takes the, it takes the history of our country and talks about some of the harder components that we don't normally talk about in, in quote, history class and education. So it offers a lot of, it offers a lot of opportunity for some rich dialogue and I'm excited for it. I'm nervous a little bit for it because it's not something that we've done and I want it to go well. So we're, we're working and reaching out to, to other districts who have been doing some of the work and getting some guidance on what went well and what were some initial mistakes possibly. And so, yeah, I, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a positive thing. I'm in process right now of, we're trying to figure out the seventh grade book. I've got one in mind, but I'm not, I'm not totally set on it. So, but that's coming. So, okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any board questions for James before we move on to Jeff? All right, Jeff, you're up.
Hi, everybody. Good night. I mean, good night. No, I'm just kidding. I'm going to start with special education and then go on to the South Campus. So I do have a couple of slides. I'm sorry to, to, to have some slides, but here they are. And so hopefully, right now, you're seeing my PowerPoint. Is that possible? Okay. So from a special education standpoint, we had to have the conversations with our staff about returning students that were furthest from the educational justice. And for that, we have about a little over 200 students in special education in the district. And currently, we're serving about 25 in four different classrooms. And so what we did was we reached out via case manager to all students and families in special education. And we determined IEPs that were students that definitely needed that additional support. And we identified a safe way to bring them back to the campus. And of course, safety was number one because we have one incident of an issue and we're going, we knew we were going to be facing closure. So we grouped all of the students that were coming back to campus by cohort grouping and those four classrooms. And so the staff, the students, they are in a, I like to say, a bubble. So they come and go together and they don't mix with the other cohorts. What that came to be was we have a K4 intensive support classroom at the North Campus. We have our K4 behavior classroom at the North Campus. We have students in our 5-6 behavior classroom at the South Campus. And then the majority of students in our 712 program in our intensive support classroom at the 712 campus. What that looks like is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, nine to one. Again, they're organized for transportation and support groups to be safe. And you'll see here, this little picture here from one of our Zoom sessions, we had teachers. I just, most of my presentation is going to be a shout out to all of these folks. We were meeting weeks before, in August, long before they were back on contract, long before they had MOUs. And they were setting up ways and strategies because they're the first ones to jump in and say, yes, we want our kids back on campus. So I'm just going to spend some time reading some names. And I know that's silly, but I really think it's important for everybody to know these are the people that are doing the work with our kids. And so we have Robin Robertson, our North Campus Intensive Support Classroom Teacher. Lori Tricia, Carly Hudson, Teresa Nero-Worth and Tiffany White are our paraeducators in that classroom. Luke Hodson is our Behavior Support Teacher. He has Emily Schmidt, Dan Corbett and Jackie Ballack working in the Behavior Classroom. Becky Ward is our 5-6 Behavior Support Resource Teacher. And she has Mark Ruffedge and Deanna Dodge and also Joanne Welliver working remotely in that classroom. And then Melissa Pritchett as our 712 Support Class with Mandy Jones, Connie Savage, Matthew Bell and Hannah Bond. I also want to give a shout out to our Resource Room Teachers. So who's supporting the other 200 students? And in reality, that's our Resource Room Teachers. And so we have a teacher at the North Campus for K4, Kelsey Barrett. We have Samantha Rosetti George and Debbie Hoke in that classroom, supporting as paraeducators. We have Becky Ward, 5-6 Campus. And again, Joanna Welliver, Deanna Dodge, Mark Ruffedge, Jennifer Giasaffy at the 7-8 with both Barb Lornet and Chantel Petty. We have Tyler Hayne serving our ninth and 10th graders with Aubrey Waldron. And we have Rochelle Bennett closing out with 11th and 12th grade with Angie Hudgens. What does that look like? Well, they're using and working with our support specialists. So I don't know if, we've had these up before, but we have two fabulous school psychologists in the district, Aaron Gutzmer and Sonya Ringsrud. Becky Breeze and Jeremy Fry are speech and language pathologists. Michael Swenson is our occupational therapist. And my partner in crime, Marie Pullman, is our Special Education Specialist, keeping us all in compliance. So the goals of the program have been this, very simple. Keep everybody safe, support our student learning during the crisis, increase access to services, both remote and in person, and increase, and I'm, my little thing is there, increase the time in, in person that those students are on campus. So as school reopening continues, the specialized staff is looking for successes with these initial students that we've brought back. So right now, most are coming twice a week for four hours each day. We're hoping to extend that to four times a week. And then as we do that with the initial cohort, we're hoping to bring back some of the students that are still yet left, left the furthest away from, from access and services in, in those other classrooms. So we're looking at increasing, I would say, again, 25. So we'll flip again by, by a 100% increase as soon as we can identify those students as we start to move up the dial on the remote learning goals. So I wanted to show a few pictures, which are fun to kind of see some of the work. Some of this is South Campus and some of it is special education. But I think it's always fun to see the kids. As you know, the weather's been great in September, other than the smoke. So we've been out in the garden as much as possible. We have students that are wearing their masks, they're being active participants in class. We have students that are actually thriving right now. And I'll just kind of go through these. This is a group of our students in our Behavior Classroom doing lettuce picking. And I'll just keep going through these real quick. As Miss, as Kerry Peterson, our farm manager and Jay Freundlich do so well, they're incorporating lessons from the garden, both in special education with our swap families and with our students that have been coming for kindergarten. I've got a couple more and then I'll, I'll go on. Serving remote needs during the pandemic for special education students is challenging. Finding tie-ins for the remote learning has been a real burden for our parents. And I echo what John and, and Paul and what, what James has said. The, the challenge is how do we engage students? Many of the students in special education, not all of them, but some are certainly the reluctant learners in our system. And so you add reluctant learning to the disability that they might be working with as well as this remote instruction, finding transitions, finding ways to support them. That's what our paraeducators are doing, our teachers are doing. And just wanted to give them a strong shout out for that work. So I don't know if you want to ask any questions about special education before I go on to the South Campus. Okay. So at the South Campus, we're doing the same that the high school and the middle school are doing. We really were very appreciative to have the soft start. We started with a pass out event so that students and families could come in and get all their textbooks, their Chromebooks, their, you know, maps for social studies, garden buckets. And that went really well. We had almost 95% participation in those pickup events. And families were just so thrilled at the organization that the teachers did to make sure that they had materials, both knowing that we were going to be doing learning in a remote fashion, but also providing those, those up, you know, those lessons ahead of time via paper or textbook so that students would be successful when we got into remote learning. Again, I got to do a shout out to our teachers at the South Campus and I'm sorry, I'm going to do it again. Sarah Gillette teaches our K2 SWAT and SWAT program. I know Susie's going to talk more about SWAT, but at the South Campus, we're up over our enrollment from March. And a big reason for that is our engagement with our families, but also our investment in, in the participation with SWAT. And so I know she's going to talk more about that soon. Jane Craby teaches our 3-6 SWAT and SWAT class. Pam Munsey teaches ELA in math. Catherine Mack, ELA. Jenny Campbell, our social studies teacher. John LaVassar, our science teacher. We welcomed him back from the garden this year. Eric Stein, teacher of science and math. He was our Rotary Teacher of the Year last year. Tom Sage, social studies and physical education. And Becky Ward is our special education teacher. Welcoming back Jay Freundlich to the district. He was a teacher before and he's come back and is focused at the 5-6 level on garden, but also as our SWAT case manager. And Kerry Peterson, of course, the farm manager, is in every video. Art with Val Hagness, Chris Harshman for band. Heather Dubendorf is teaching reading. Tracy McKnight runs our HCL Cohort for Highly Capable Students. Of course, Janet Hunter is our wonderful counselor that we share with the middle school. And Megan Robinson is our administrative assistant. And of course, Emmy Atwood, our nurse. We did have, I just want to give a quick shout out to Bayview Farms. They donated a bunch of plants for beautification at the front of the school. And Anna Guggenheim and Jim and Bill, sorry, Bill and Diane Schaefer, they were the ones that updated the planter and I was so thankful for them doing that. So a little flavor of what is coming tomorrow for our Cougars. Tomorrow is our first Cougar Pride Assembly. And so how do you meet, as John and Paul and, and James have talked about, the social emotional needs of fifth and sixth graders? Well, it's a real challenge. And one of the things that we're really working on is how to create culture, how to meet their social emotional needs. So I have two little clips that I want to show you and I'm going to make sure that my sound is working here. So hopefully I'll be able to hear it. So we asked all of our homerooms. Students are organized. They each take six periods of core classes and they have a homeroom. And the homeroom is designed to be our social emotional connection with each of the kids. And so homeroom number one request is show us your blue and white Cougar pride.
Cougars in the house. Go South would be.
So that's one clip. I have about 35 others. So we're, we're, we're engaging them with fun. And then we're going to have a constant theme at the South Campus this year. And that is, where will Calvin be next?
Hey.
Oh, hey, look at the popcorn we have.
Farmer Kerry, what's that that I hear in the bean teepee?
Ah, it's a cougar!
Oh my goodness. Calvin, what are you doing in the garden? Oh, he's eating all the scarlet butter beans. Now listen, when you've read much meat, where are you going to go next?
So just a little flavor of the social emotional learning that we're attempting to do at the South Campus. Where will Calvin be next? Who knows where Calvin will be next? But Calvin certainly needs probably a bigger face mask.
I was going to say Calvin's mouth was not covered.
Calvin's mouth was not covered. So we've ordered a better mask for Calvin. Anyways, do you have any questions about the South Campus?
Thank you, Jeff. That was, that was fun. Appreciate that. And if you could, I just want you to mention, if you have anything on, on the equity plans, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you're working on it. So I know it's a K6 effort. Maybe Susie's taking care of the equity piece. I'm not sure.
So thank you, Joe, for reminding, for reminding me to speak to equity. The district is, has solicited, and I've mentioned it before, our Inclusive Practices Project grant that we've received from OSPI. And so we have a district steering committee for how to increase not only inclusive practices for students with disabilities, but with general education students overall. And our equity tie-in to that is that certainly equity is being addressed in our building leadership team meetings and in our special education multidisciplinary teams. But not only is, is equity for, for racial issues, but also for issues of inclusion in, for both highly capable students, for students with McKinney-Vento. for students with McKinney Vento needs, for students that are all over the spectrum in our system. And so our work at the South Campus and in special education continues to be fully involved with our equity and aligned with our equity goals.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Suzie, you're up.
All right, good evening, everybody. Kristi is gonna help me out and I too have a few slides to share. I'm really excited to have the opportunity to to share the good work. And I'm just so fun, need to hear from my colleagues and the amazing work they're up to. So Kristi, if you don't mind going to that first slide, thank you for helping me. One of the the best parts of this year has been our our welcoming families back during our soft start. Every single teacher has said, we have to keep doing this regardless of whether we're back in person next next fall. We had over ninety percent of our families attend. We set up tents outside, little pop-up tents. It was during that very warm week. We had a big welcome for them and you could just see people nervously entering the students and the families and then leaving with these big smiles with their Chromebooks, all their materials. They'd met their teacher. We had popsicles for them. So it was just, it was a really a beautiful, it was a beautiful week of welcoming and seeing our families with, of course, masks and social distancing. If you don't mind, go to the next slide, Kristi. So many people made that happen. This is our little welcome tent outside. You can see our teachers. I didn't, I didn't do it, Jeff did, and name every single teacher, but every single one of them. They're working so cohesively at the grade levels. It's it's, they've even set all their Zoom calls to the same time and the same day for each grade level to make it easier for families who are working as pods for our partnership with the South Woodbee Children's Center because they've got some of our kids during the day. So they're always looking for ways because really the work at K four is around family partnerships, right? Our parents are right there going to school with our with our K four kiddos. And so that that family partnership is at the heart of our work right now. You know, so many people to thank besides all of our amazing certificated teachers. Catherine Pfeiffer, our school counselor, Marty Buckman and Ellen, they were out there every single day, all day, greeting our families, making them feel welcome. The kids were so excited to see them all. Belle Brown is absolutely amazing, what she did with some support from Marty of getting those Chromebooks. Our families are so grateful for not only the Chromebooks, for everything they've done to make them so simple with this new, some of the new software and programs to allow children to easily get on those machines. Our custodian, Diane Richardson, and of course Marty, they did all the setup. They had our teachers ready to go and and ready to greet our families. And then, of course, our classified staff members. We couldn't do what we do without them, every single one of them. I want them to personally know how valued they are and how much we appreciate the work that that they do every single day. All right, if you don't mind going to the next slide, Kristi. I'm I'm so excited to get to have these kindergarteners on on campus. It's the sweetest thing. One of the things that you'll see is that our kindergarten teachers have set up one of our covered areas as our outdoor classroom. So they have been outside every day since they've started. Our kids, our kindergarteners are coming two days a week for two hours at a at a time, which has been perfect. We're hoping to ramp that up soon. We're gonna be starting to transition with social distancing and masks inside. But the children are really doing incredible job. Everybody was like, kindergarteners cannot wear masks. Well, indeed, they are, and they're doing a really fabulous job with it and just loving being there so much, so much gratitude from our families. And they're and they're feeling confident, they're feeling safe, they're trusting the work that we're doing right now, which is so great. All right, if you don't mind, the next slide. I want to thank our kindergarten team who are, you know, the only teachers right now in addition to our amazing special education staff that Jeff discussed, who are on site with their kids. So for Karen Hansen, Karen Hansen, Suzanne Haugen, and the new to our district this year, Kristen Cota, with support from Ellis, Ellen Wallace, have just done a fantastic job making these kiddos ready to to be here and and learn. And they're really leading the way. There are, you know, our pilot group of seeing how this is going and what we're learning before we bring back more of our students. All right, next slide, please. Next, I wanted to talk a little bit about our, what we're calling Swap. The acronym doesn't really line up, but you know, it it works. That would be in parent, our parent partnership program. And this really, this program development really came from families. We had families who met with Joe and with me this summer and said, hey, we want to support the district. We want to stay enrolled, but we need some other options. We don't want our kids necessarily on commuter, computers. We want to take a more active role. So it's a pilot program that we're we're working to keep going in long term. It really provides an opportunity for those families who want that guidance. They want the support, they want a teacher, but they're really ready to take on more of that active role and less dependence on that online computer-based experience. Next slide, please. So what are the goals? And what's exciting to me about this program is we really have developed this program in partnership with our families. So these goals have have developed as we've met over the summer and built this program. And again, it's about providing that that mentor teacher, that support to build stronger connections between our families. And that is one of the gifts that we are taking away from this COVID time is this strengthening of relationship and connection with our families. There is a level of mutual respect that has been building and growing that I don't think we had before between our families and our teachers to provide that guidance for our child's educational path. And then we're gonna be implementing regular parent education, monthly opportunities for connection. Of course, remote initially, but we hope to do that in person as we move forward. Next slide, please. We have been really pretty amazed at our numbers here. You know, our local Waldorf School is taking a year off except for their kindergarten. So many Waldorf families, many families who had homeschooled, a whole range of reasons that people have gotten to this program, but the numbers have really been amazing to see. Next slide, please. And these are the teachers and I just, I really have to give a huge shout out to these teachers because they're doing their regular remote learning program in addition to serving these families. And somebody used the analogy of of building the plane as we're flying it. And that has truly been the case with Swap. And it's been really beautiful to see again that partnership and the communication that's happening between these these amazing teachers and families. And I could just not, I couldn't be more grateful to all of our teachers and and this swap group in particular. Next slide, please. I just want to give some additional shout outs. You know, our office staff, man, they they just, they make every single person who comes to our door, who calls our office, be okay. Day in and day out, they're providing that, hey, it's okay, how can we help you? How can we support you? Our transportation folks with getting those meals, you know, getting our kiddos here. Our kitchen staff, our maintenance staff. If you haven't been by and seen some of the work that's happened at the K four campus, that beautiful whale. Todd Brager and JJ and the maintenance team have have built some beautiful gates and fencing for us. So just so much gratitude. And our health department, of course, such great work. Next slide, please. Just wanted to talk a little bit about some of our partnerships. Of course, our school farms with readiness to learn, Woodbee Island Nourishes. Having them on our campuses and working so closely with our with our farm is just such a beautiful thing to see. We welcomed back AmeriCorps members this year through a partnership between Woodbee Island Nourishes and readiness to learn our with our school farms. We have three amazing young AmeriCorps members who just are keeping the energy so positive. We have what's called Washington Reading Corps, a reading support member in our K four, supporting our reading title programs. So we can't do this alone, right? It's all about making these connections with our families and with our larger community. And that's really, I feel like, our focus at K four. Next slide, please. I too want to express my appreciation to Joe for her leadership and support. You know, last year was my first year as a as a principal. It was quite an exciting start to my principal career and I really couldn't have done it without the support of Joe and my administrative colleagues. So I'm so grateful. And all of the community organizations, literally a day does not go by that I don't get a phone call or an email from somebody in our community saying, how can we help? What can we do to support you in the schools? And I'm not gonna read all these, but this is just a a partial list of the organizations that are supporting us right now. To our school board, you know, your willingness to serve and to support us is absolutely essential to our work. And, you know, it's it's fun knowing that many of us have been on Woodbee Island for a long time and we know that this community, if you had to go through something like we're going through, to go through it here. This is really, we're so fortunate, I really feel. I just want to talk briefly. Joe had asked about the equity work and I'm I'm so excited about that. And really, we're we're looking at this in such a big picture, not only racial equity, but, you know, how do we, how do we serve those kids who, you know, are coming from poverty, who are coming from inequity in in many, many ways? And and our teachers are ready for this work, they're excited for this work. We're beginning with looking at literature in our school, in our in our classroom libraries and beginning to have these conversations about how do we, how do we use children's literature to really begin those critical conversations at a young age? And so our building leadership team is really taking, taking that work on as the core team. And we're really excited about it and we'll keep you updated. So thank you. I talk really fast, so I guess it's good. I'm at the end because everybody's probably tired, but if you have any questions or comments, please let me know. Thank you so much.
Well, I I actually, does the board have questions at this point?
No, just just a huge shout out, Joe, to all the principals and yourself and just just an amazing job along with the teachers. I'm speaking, you know, just from a parent perspective, I just, I can't tell you how impressed I was with the soft launch, how organized it was, and then how well the Zoom classes and everything is going. It's it's amazing and the teachers are just doing an awesome job. So huge shout out to you, Joe, the administration, the teachers, just everyone's been doing a great job.
Thank you. Yeah, I I am very fortunate. These these folks that have just presented to you and Dan has yet to go, that they are holding it together in a beautiful way. And I believe staff feel supported and it shows. So I am really appreciative of all of the staff. I mean, we we could list everyone. I do want to let Dan talk about enrollment, but before I do that, I'll take the three questions. At the high school, how is equity team being chosen? Who decides who's being included? The equity teams are headed by the principals and they will be making those decisions at every level. And they know to be inclusive. So thank you for all of your work for all students. I'm interested in hearing about how the South Woodbee High School Equity Team was formed. Is there BIPOC representation, other marginalized groups? John, as I said, is in charge of that and it would be best to contact John about that. But yes, we are doing our best to make sure all voices are included. We actually have a meeting with a group of students. We have two board members and several administrators meeting with a group of students and someone who is mentoring them. We'll be doing that Monday, so we'll be hearing directly from student voice. But I know John has a plan to include students and making sure that he's working to include all of those marginalized voices. So that answers this last question as well. And seven twelve, how are we working to include marginalized students? So there's been a concerted effort, as you can see, by our admin staff, by all of us, to continue on with equity. We started that quite some time ago. And one of the things that we are doing in our soft opening and now in our regular opening is those who are farthest from educational justice. We continue our quest. We've, we started with kindergarten, we started with students with special needs, and now we're moving to those, and and they're referred to as students who are McKinney Vento students. But that's because that is the act that helps us serve our students who are experiencing homelessness. Students who are experiencing homelessness or for some other reason are not able to connect as much as we'd like them to. So whether we set up an internet cafe or we do, you know, small groups of students. And that is something we're moving toward now prior to looking at our reopening October fifteenth plan. And I'll bring that up, but I wanna, I wanna let Dan talk about where we are with enrollment because that has an impact on on everything, right? Because it it speaks to budget and funding. So Dan, if if you could take us there, that would be great.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that. And actually, I'll probably just talk you through it rather than show you a bunch of screens. This is a conversation we had most of summer in the fall or in the budget process about, you know, where is enrollment going to be? There's a lot of trepidation about what a distance learning model was gonna look like and how that was gonna be responded to. And I'm actually pleasantly surprised. We have about eleven hundred eighty FTE, we had budget twelve twenty-eight, so we're about forty-eight down. And that twelve twenty-eight is an annual number. But I'm a little encouraged because normally, and in a typical year, and it's a pattern we see year after year, we start with a higher enrollment and we decline over time. I'm not sure if this is a normal year. If I looked at what happened between the time we took this eleven eighty count and today, we have enrolled twenty-four new students and only lost twelve. So we've gained twelve students in the last week and a half. So my hope is that as we move along and these programs are successful, that we will see an actual increase in our enrollment rather than the traditional decrease, which would be a very positive thing for us. But to give you a little perspective on, you know, what is that eleven? Where we were last year, last September, we were at twelve eighty-three. So we were down about a hundred and three from that. We anticipated that we were gonna be down. And from our average, we're down about seventy-four. So we expected some of that, but not quite. And where is the difference? The biggest difference is in basically three grades that have double-digit declines in their numbers from what we anticipated. And the first kindergarten, and we've been talking about that expectation for a long time, that that particular grade level was one that we expected a lot fewer kids. We are also down in first grade and seventh grade. Other than that, most of the other grades are very similar to what we had anticipated. So there's a few pockets that are in there. And then if we look at the building levels, you can see that the high school, there's roughly between the nine twelve and the SWAT nine twelve program, about four hundred and ten kids there. The middle school is about a hundred eighty-six. And you moved on me, so I can't tell you what the other ones are. But anyways, it gives you an idea of where we are. At three hundred seventy-three at the North Campus and about a hundred eighty-eight at the South Campus. And as Jeff had mentioned before, the South Campus is actually up a little bit from where they were last year. So that's really encouraging that, you know, at that level we have. And this is just a lot of numbers. Basically, the top part is what our enrollment was last year. And if you wanted to look at, you can see that we started kindergarten with about ninety-one kids last year and we're to, and we're currently about fifty-two, gives you that variation. And then down below is the budget, which is eighty-six. So it gives you a difference between those. But like I said, you know, the pattern normally is a decreasing pattern over the year. I'm hoping that it's totally different this year and we see an increase, especially at some point when we start bringing students back to campus. That might have a very positive effect on enrollment rather than the opposite. So that's about where we are with our enrollment count. We're eleven eighty, head count's about twelve thirteen. Out of the twelve thirteen, six hundred and twenty-nine are at the seven twelve campus and about five eighty-eight at the K six campus. So they're fairly evenly split between the two locations. Any questions I could answer about enrollment for you?
It's a lot better now than it was the first couple of weeks.
Yes, and you know, it's gonna be a little better too in that OSPI. And that OSPI relaxed the enrollment reporting rules. It used to be we reported the first four days of September. They've allowed us to count within the, you know, basically the first 20 days of September. If a child is enrolled in time and attended in time during their, so we should be able to add that additional 12 students on top of there, which would bring us to, you know, closer to 12 or 1192, which is an improvement even more so than we were last week. So, that's encouraging. And yeah, it's actually a little better than I anticipated we'd be at this particular time. So, I do want to shout out to Suzie and her SWAP program. There's 96 students that have signed up for that. I think made a big difference in this enrollment report.
Thank you, Dan. I'm going to read these comments and then I'm going to go into our reopening plan, if that's okay. Brooke, I can't actually see you right now, but.
No, that, that's good.
Okay, so we have two comments here. "Our district has been doing an excellent job handling the challenge of COVID and we agree the soft start was so helpful. And now having everyone on Google Classroom has been a huge improvement. As a mixed-race family, we are incredibly proud of the proactive work you are all doing towards equity in our schools. From the BLM sign to the equity policy to each principal purposely working toward expanding the curriculum to include more cultural learning, yay to middle schoolers reading stamped. Great work, keep it up and thank you." We have a comment from the 712 PTSA Board. "Appreciate and fully supports the district's continuous efforts to provide trainings for staff and students in regards to equity and inclusion. Also, the PTSA Board wants to publicly announce our support of the Black Lives Matter banner that is hanging up at the high school." Thank you. Kathy Ireland, 712 PTSA Board President. Let's see, we do have one more, I'll cover it in a second. Any information on when school may start the second, the day a week on the hybrid learning class. So I'm going to take over the screen. Kristy, if you would stop your share. You don't see that, do you? Just a second. There we go. So this is what the board approved as our, as our matrix for decision-making. I have been meeting with the county, I continue to meet with them once a week. We continue to review the progress of disease. There was a little bit of a spike, they had another outbreak, but we are still doing well, if well is low. So on October 15th, we're going to look at that officially. Plans to meet with the union leadership of all of our unions and review it. And that is when we will look at, students in K6 may begin hybrid learning plus rotation of two days in, three days out. And families will be contacted with a start date. And we'll continue the, the remote learning as well. I'm hoping that it's met. And we will look at how we will re-enter our students and that requires a conversation with all of our unions. And we hope to be at that place where sometime after October 15th, we will go to the next level. Assuming that goes well, November 15th would be our next look and there would be some transition there. It is becoming very clear that our high school program in particular, because of what ends up happening in November and December across the district, we have these holiday breaks and it becomes very disruptive in normal times. The high school also works on an eight-period year or a four-period semester. So the reality is, it would be kind of silly if we get to the point in, you know, December where we would bring back high school kids for a couple of weeks in a particular class only to transition to a different bubble at the, the beginning of the second semester. So it's more likely that the actual high school program would probably wait to transition. But this is all yet to be determined. This, this process is continuing to change. Every time I get on a health department call, every time I talk with OSPI, there's a little nuance here or there. What I can say is that in terms of what we are doing, we're being very careful. We have people doing health attestations, which means they have no symptoms and they, they say they have no symptoms. They attest to that. And we're taking temperatures as needed if someone comes in without that form filled out. Our goal is to keep disease out. That is very important. And again, I understand as much as all of us do that we want to be back to face-to-face learning with our students. We want to see them, we want to be with them. Yet, we need to do it slowly and carefully. And I continue to follow the plan that, that the board approved. So that's where we are on, on the reopening. I will stop sharing, but we can see each other. I did want to talk a little bit about internet connectivity. Shout out to Gail LaVassar, who for some reason, I think because she works with many of the students who are farthest away from educational justice, that she ended up being our person to help people get connected. So there is some grant money around that. She is working with Would Be Talent with families and it's just not all that simple. It's not about, it's more about, is it available? You know, is a hotspot worth the trouble if you don't have phone signal? And then people troubleshooting their equipment. So we're, we're, I'm meeting with our IT staff tomorrow to talk about how we can reach out to families and maybe help them with that connectivity because it's not always just about, do you have internet or don't you? So we're working on that. I also want us to start thinking about the fact that we are no longer, yes, we are in a pandemic and I don't mean to minimize that, but we're not operating in crisis mode. This is our normal. We are kind of in a chronic illness now, we're not in an acute illness. So we have to, we're, we have to do things that we would do under normal circumstances, like reactivate our committees, which our principals or the lead person in those committees, they're going to start reactivating committees. We are continuing our equity work. We are moving forward with a robust educational program so that it's, we get into a normal of some sort. Not, not what we want it to be yet, but, but closer. Let's see. Oh, and in terms of soft start, I found out that, that we actually can apply for a waiver and consider that in the future. So I'm going to look into that. Okay, looks like we have another something in the chat. Oh, the information on when school may start. Yeah, we don't have a definite on that, we just have an approximate, so. So thank you to the school board for your attentive listening. There's been a lot of work done, so really appreciate that, that we got to share it with you.
Yeah, thank you very much for all of those presentations. Getting that information on the reopening is fantastic. Getting that firsthand experience from the principals who are leading that charge is fantastic. Yeah, it, it sounds like it's going better than we expected, but almost as well as we hoped. And that's sort of where I, I like to be, I call it the Scotty principle from Star Trek. You, you promise something a ways out and when you can finish it a little bit better than that, everyone thinks it's awesome. And I think that that's a fantastic place to be right now. Are there any other questions or comments on those presentations or the reports before we get into the, or Dr. Moshe, did you have any other information for the superintendent's report? Or was that what you had for us?
I, I think that's probably enough. I do have a couple of announcements. October 7th, we are training staff. Erin Jones will be here with, well, she won't be here with us, but she will be with us to provide training. If you recall, she was going to come in and do some opening day training on equity and we had to delay that. So she will be here October 7th. Staff will be in training 9 to noon and the board is welcome to join if you, if your schedule allows. And I already mentioned that on the 28th, we're meeting with, with students. So those were all of my, my announcements. Shout outs, if I start, I wouldn't be able to stop, but I have to say that, that our tech team, our TOCs in particular, what they were able to put together for teachers for those first few days and then during the soft start to continue on, it was just outstanding. It's a lot, it was like drinking from a fire hose, but I, I think it, it served us very well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, did you have something, Andrea?
Yeah, I just wanted to just publicly acknowledge all of the staff's amazing work, but in particular, the leadership team. I know that your work and the planning and preparation that you have been putting in place has been acknowledged and recognized across the region. And I just want to just say, you guys have done a phenomenal job planning. And the fact that it's going so smoothly is a testament to the amount of work that you did in the run-up to school opening.
Yeah, I completely, wholeheartedly agree. So this would be the point in the meeting where we had a student board member report. We do not currently have a student board member. We're getting in touch with Mr. Patton to find one. Hopefully one who can provide us some, as I was saying, firsthand, this would be even better firsthand because it'd be a student, information on what, just the field, how things are going, what's, what, what it's like from a student's perspective in the schools right now. So we're going to reach out to Mr. Patton and to some of the leadership classes to try to find someone who's connected to a variety of different groups, who can bring their voices, collate their voices and bring them to the board. And try to get us that insider perspective and a student voice on the board. And now we move on into board comments. I have a few comments myself, but I'd like to open it up at this point to anyone else on the board who would like to say something about what we just heard, about what they've been doing lately, things that matter to them right now. Anyone? Well, I've got a few things. Ms. Richards was wonderful enough to provide a school visit for me. I, I got to visit the kindergarteners outside just yesterday. It was fantastic seeing the area that the teachers have put together. And having a four-and-a-half-year-old myself, I, I could imagine her in there and I, I would absolutely feel safe with her being there. And that was just, that was wonderful for me as a parent to know that, to see firsthand and to have that feeling that I would feel safe with my daughter there. And that's a testament to everything that the teachers, that the staff, that the administration has done so wonderfully well there. I know that the garden program has also been working very well, as Ms. Richards said, with the SWAP families, bringing them in. And that's a fantastic opportunity because that garden is just so wonderful and such a great opportunity. And the people involved in that are so engaged and so excited about what they're doing. We're going to be working on more board visits. We're going to put off the 712 visits until there are actually some students on campus. But I've been in touch with Mr. Swanson and with Mr. Patton about when that becomes appropriate, getting some school visits there. We're going to try to set up another school visit at the kindergarten level before we expand to hybrid plus. Just so some folks besides myself get a chance to see what's going on there because it's going great. And we'd love to expand that to the south campus as well, once we have some students there, besides the special students.
Real quick, before we move too far down that road, could we possibly reach out to parents' comfort level with that? I know that we're asking them a really big ass with them sending their kids to school and we're being very purposeful in keeping those groups small and consistent. So before we start planning visits, I'd like to know if parents are comfortable with that, especially because it involves us going from classroom to classroom, which breaks up the bubbles.
Wonderful point, Andrea, thank you. I, I think that's a very important point to really work on, asking that their comfort level. And that's a wonderful point, thank you for bringing it up. So that, that's something that we'll put on a little break there to get some, get in touch with some of the parents to make sure that they're comfortable with further, with their school board visits, visits. Thank you, Andrea, for that. Once we get things a little bit settled in, probably not this month, but the month after, I'd like to go back to the board readings on the governance book that Julie brought up. I thought that was really great at bringing together some coherent strategy to how we as board members interact and act within the district. So I'd like to bring that back and also draw in some other work on how to get, how to make the school board in particular, a comfortable place for students and families of color and staff of color to speak out and be, feel like they're being heard and to actually be heard. And again, that'll be, we were doing these readings every business meeting and workshop and each board member had a chapter that they were looking at. And so I don't have the full list, so I'm going to get in touch with Dr. Haddon to get the list of who had which chapters. And we'll start that up, not this, not this month, but probably next month, if folks are comfortable with that. If not, we can put that off later or skip it entirely, but I think it was very valuable information. Any, anything, anyone would like to add to that? Any comments or concerns about that?
I have the next chapter and my presentation is still ready to go.
Excellent. Then I will get in touch with you about when we start that up.
And we, we did order a copy for Ann.
Wonderful, excellent, thank you. I have also gotten, reached out to first Mr. Patton and then Ms., Mr. Hodson about taking up the board chair visits to CWP, Contemporary Word Problems classes, to talk about what the school board does and the importance of local government and how they can get involved as seniors. That's something I really look forward to and love that I have the capability to take on that project that Linda Resco did so many, so long and so well. So I'm very excited about that. I've got, I've reached out and I'm, as soon as I hear back, I'll see how we can do that. That's all I have, unless there's something that Dr. Moshe and I talked about and I've forgotten. We've been at this for a while now, but I, again, I'd like to open it up to any other comments or reports that any board members might have.
Yeah, Joe, I, I think, you know, before we go to the hybrid model and everything works out, I do think as a board, you know, we, we need to meet live again. You know, being leaders of the district, I, I just, you know, I feel funny telling kids and teachers and administrators to go back and yet we're meeting on Zoom. So I think at some point, we need to look at that.
Yeah, well, just, it turns out, Charlie, that we are, we can do it with appropriate social distancing. And as Brooke noted when he, he was without power, so he's in district office. I'm actually in the district office. Dan's in the district office. Principals have been in, teachers have been in, so we, we're getting there. have been in, teachers have been in, so we, we're getting there. Certainly, you know, I know, I, I think I know what you're saying, which is we need to model that we're willing to, that we're willing to meet. So certainly, you know, we can, we can appropriately socially distance ourselves. I do think that it would be great for us in terms of participants to, to continue to do the Zoom piece. I think we have much more participation with Zoom and the board had mentioned that early on and there were some cost prohibitive issues around it, but now that we're used to it, we've got to be able to figure out a way to do that. Anyway, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that. We're not even looking at when we're coming back until October 15th. So certainly, you know, maybe, maybe we set our sights on the October business meeting. So, but we can talk about it. That's up to you as a board.
I do think that that's a very good point about modeling though, Charlie. Although the difficulty of having our Zoom meetings here with a mask on, if we're in-person and socially distanced, might make it difficult to be understood on a recording, but I think that's definitely something we should still consider and look at, how we can do safely and without losing any audibility. That's not a word, but.
I get it, but we're asking teachers and students to go back and wear their mask. We, that's not a problem, right?
Absolutely.
We can absolutely accomplish that. So I just think as leaders, we need to set the example and we need to go back, right? And meet live. So that's just my.
I think your point is very well taken and I agree.
Okay. Well, we can, we can figure out how to do that. Maybe it's in a bigger space and everybody's six feet apart and, you know, but, but yeah, I, I think with appropriate social distancing, it's certainly allowable now in our county because we're in phase three. It's still not allowable in, in counties that are not, which it's very interesting because those health departments are, I don't want to say pushing, but encouraging districts to bring students back, even though they're not at an appropriate level in terms of, and only at the elementary level. They're not encouraging secondary at this time. So, so certainly, you know, it, it's a good point.
Yeah.
We do have a couple of comments. Do you want me to read them, Brooke?
Certainly, we can, we can certainly do that.
Oh, it's more accolades for Brooke. Thank you, Brooke, for your energy, humbleness and thoughtful inclusion. I appreciate your style of facilitation. Your enthusiasm is refreshing. I hope these board meetings will still be available over Zoom and has really allowed accessibility.
Well, and I, I'd like to address the first point and note that I'm really getting pushed on inclusion by Andrea in particular, but other board members also, which I really appreciate. And so I want to give a shout out to her also for always taking the forefront on that and giving me something good to follow behind.
Thanks, Brooke.
Well, and Andrea, you know, just back to Andrea for one second, she, she really started the ball rolling when it was about curriculum and an equity lens and it, at the moment it happened, it, it kind of shocked the system. But it, it, between Andrea and our students of color who stepped up and said, you know, we, we need our voices to be heard. And this was several years ago. We had a couple of board, student board representatives who really also pushed the board and the, and the administration forward. So it's a work in progress.
Unless there are any, I'll give one last call if there are any further comments before we adjourn. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming out.
Have a good night.
Thank you.